Good evening and welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the London Town Council. We thank everyone for being here. This time I'd like to ask Pastor Keith Hobes to come forward for our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Keith, thank you for being here tonight and for leading us in our invitation.
Love and prayer. Our Father in Heaven indeed, we're thankful for the day that you blessed us with the rain, the sunshine, the beauty of your creation. We're certainly mindful and thankful of all that you do for us each and every day. We're certainly thankful, Father, for our town and those who lead us in our town. And we're thankful for the citizens of it and the way that you bless us in so many ways. We realize, Father, there are those perhaps in our community who are struggling at this time. We pray that you be with them and give them a good night's rest and take care of them, Father, in your hands, and that they look to thee for the strength and guidance that they need. Continue, Father, to bless our nations that we may enjoy the freedoms and opportunities that we have in this land. Bless us in all that we do, for it's in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any items from council to edit on the agenda? Any items like they are in the lot here? I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented for second.
Second.
On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. We also received the minutes from our July regular council meeting. Hopefully we'll have a chance to review those. Any editing or additions that need to be made to those minutes? Hearing none, but I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the month of July. I'll make that motion, Mayor. Further discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, same side. We've also received the accounts payable for July. Mr. Shorter leads the assistance additions that you put into seats.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'll move to approve the July accounts payable of capital asset purchases as presented.
On favor of the motion, as are second.
I'll stand.
Any further discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, well, we have several young men and women here this evening. This is one of the times we enjoy as a governing values to recognize our young people. We have some folks here tonight that missed our last time, missed our meeting, were unable to be here. So I'm gonna come around the front as I call your names, come up and for your presentation, and then we'll go from there. Ms. Leah Beck. Hi Leah.
Hi.
You're pretty tall.
Yeah.
You've accomplished something, I believe, that's never been accomplished at the Virginia High School League. Is that accurate? Am I reading that right?
I don't know.
I'm gonna read this, okay? You might have to all be read together. So Ms. Leah Beck, on behalf of the consensus of the mayor and the town council of Lebanon, whereas Leah Beck was selected to the 2024 Virginia High School League Girls Class 2A All-State Track and Field Team. And whereas Leah Beck is becoming the 2024 VHSL Girls Class 2A State Track Shot Put Champion. How about that? I'll bring it in.
Eleven.
You got one more year.
Yep.
Let me repeat that. No pressure. Therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the town council that Leah Beck be hereby commended for becoming the 2024 VHSL Class 2A State Track Shot Put Champion. It further resolved that Leah be hereby commended for her commitment, dedication, and success this eighth day, this nineteenth day of August. We will give this to you on the eighth of July. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right Leah. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Everybody together. Let's tell my school to go ahead and gather.
You want those group or individually, or?
Well, this was, these two will be individual, then we got gymnastics group that will be the, you see all these young ladies up here? Another young man who was unable to be with us at the last meeting. Come up.
Yep.
All right. Expressing the consensus of the mayor and the town council, whereas Eli Breeden was selected to the 2024 Virginia High School League Class 2A Second Team All-State Baseball Team outfield. Therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the town council that Eli Breeden be hereby commended for being chosen to the 2024 VHSL Class 2A Second Team All-State Baseball Team. Be further resolved that Eli be hereby commended for his commitment, dedication, and success this nineteenth day of August. Congratulations. Personally, I'll need your, I will need your help. Eli, scoot it. All right, Eli. Want to make sure of the correct pronunciation and also the event. So this is AAU National Championships. Is that correct, in gymnastics? Okay. Easton Breeden. Hey, come up here, young lady. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So did last year, didn't you?
Thank you.
Did you have a good year for last? Okay. All right. Expressing the consensus of the mayor and the town council regarding the accomplishments of Easton Breeden, whereas Easton Breeden was successful in a silver AAU Level 8 All-Round National Championships, as well as named to the National Ball Champion, plus received silver medals on uneven bars, beam, and floor. We recognize Easton for your hard work and diligent, long and diligent work to achieve this honor. It therefore resolved by the mayor and town council that Easton be hereby commended in placing him silver the 2024 AAU Level 8 All-Round National Championship and be hereby commended for your commitment, your dedication, and success to this event. Congratulations. [applause] So you're not in the correct order. Is that good?
That's good.
All right, so this is called, why don't you tell everybody what this event was?
It was the AAU National Championship.
In gymnastics.
In gymnastics.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do, instead of repeating that every time, that long term, I'm gonna call the student, the participant's name and the award that they won. Okay? So I need Gabrielle, Gabrielle French. Did I pronounce that right? Gabrielle? So you competed as an AAU Excel Platinum, earned a silver All-Round Medal on beam and floor, and a bronze medal on uneven bars. Is that correct? But we want to resolve and commend you for your commitment, your dedication, and your success in these endeavors. Congratulations. [applause] Olivia Hilton. Hi Olivia. How are you? You competed in the AAU Excel Silver Division, and we recognize you for your long season of hard and diligent work to achieve this honor. And we commend you for your commitment. Congratulations. How are you? What's your name? Hey. Make sure you're here, man. You girls stop off quietly. It's hard to know when to hear sometimes. Hi, Abby, you competed in the AAU Excel Platinum Division, and we're gonna recognize you for your hard work and long and diligent work to achieve this honor. And I know it was a great experience, I'm assuming for all the girls, and we're loving this, as well as the coaches. And we're certainly proud of you and commend you for your hard work and dedication to this sport. Congratulations. Hello there, Isabella. How are you?
Good.
We should think of all that, right? Isabella Brasso, we wanna recognize you and congratulate you on your commitment. You competed in the AAU Excel Gold Division, and we recognize you for your hard work and your commitment and effort to this particular sport, which is our, as your coach has said, a year-round event. So congratulations. Don't shoot us out, though. Remy, Remy Halmaker. Hello, Remy. Look there, little lady. How do you do? Did I pronounce it right? You're shy. Remy also competed in this AAU Excel Gold Division, and as we know, we wanna recognize you for your hard work and your commitment to this sport and year-round process. I'm very proud of you. Congratulations. Don't shrink it, then. Kaylee, how are you? Good. Worked hard all year long, didn't you? Haven't you liked that experience?
Yeah.
That was a good experience. Well, the town council wants to recognize you for your efforts in your competition in the AAU Excel Gold Division, all the hard work and time, and we wish you continued success in your sport. Congratulations. All right, Lacy Goodman.
She's not here.
I'll give that to the coach.
Jayden's not here, either.
Is Jayden here?
No.
How do you do? Did I pronounce that right? How are you tonight? I'm here, I'm gonna present you something. A lot of hard work, isn't it, this sport? You like it? Tell, you must be, to be committed, you young ladies, to this competition. And she competed at the AAU Excel Silver Division, and we recognize you for your hard work and your long and diligent work to achieve this honor. Congratulations, and we wish you the best. Paisley Lee. Hi there. Good to meet you, Ms. Paisley. Congratulations on your experience in this gymnastics competition that you got to compete in, is in the AAU Excel Gold Division. Tied with Warner Robertson on the floor and bringing home a bronze medal. Is that correct? Congratulations. We wanna recognize you for your hard work and your diligent work to achieve this honor. We wish you very best in the future. Congratulations. Riley McLaughlin. I know that name. How are you? You always smile, don't you? I see. All right, whereas Riley, you competed in the AAU Excel Platinum Division, and you brought home a bronze medal on the ball, in ball. Is that correct? Well, congratulations. We know your hard work has paid off. We want you, wish you the best success as you continue in this sport. Congratulations. Girls, just come over and kinda split in, on each side. Somebody go, let's get up there, and put a torch. Put our coach, Halmaker, right here in the middle. Y'all go, don't let me get friendly, y'all. Y'all go down that way a little bit. I'm gonna read it at you now. One more of them there. Can you come over here, too? There's you at the... Before I do this, I understand we have, let's see, the boosters group that supports this gymnastics, could you all stand that are here? Thank you. Okay, expressing the consensus of the mayor and the town council regarding the accomplishments of Ms. Melody Halmaker, whereas Melody trains the positive, the gymnastics team in Lebanon, and attended the 2024 AAU National Gymnastics Championships. We wanna recognize you, Melody, for your hard work, long and diligent commitment to achieve this honor and this sport. And we certainly wish you all continued success. As Melody told me, this is a sport, we're all used to seasons here in sports. This one's year-round. There's no break.
Like one way for Christmas.
One way. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So stay up here, girls. So, can you get everybody? Oh, we'll crunch it.
I think I can do it if I lean back like this. Although I can't see Deanna.
Is that better?
Uh, go the other way.
The only...
There you go.
Parents got everybody? Okay. Let's do it, young lady.
How you doing? How are you? You all good? You all good? You doing 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 good? You're so far apart. Get off the snacks. Drop.
He might bite you over there.
You don't know what's going on. You know.
Doing good?
Take care. Yes, sir. Excuse me. Thank you. You're fine. Me, too. [laughter] Back around the end of the gym, the last time I saw him. He worked with... Between that, we're gonna miss. [laughter]
I'd like to invite Jason. You can bring that back, please. First on our list is Ms. Karen Davis, who has an introduction to make to us tonight. How are you, Ms. Karen Davis?
I'm well, how are you, Mr. Mayor?
The mayor's good.
Thanks, sir. I love most of you all, I haven't meant a lot to most of you, but I'm Karen Davis, and I am chairman of the Russell County Public Library Board of Trustees, and we have hired a new librarian, and I wanted to bring her to the council, that's your old leader, is Pamela Stone.
I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Pamela Stone. I do come into the position with almost twenty years of experience in academic, public, and private libraries, so I kinda have a little bit of this and that to bring to the position. I'm originally from Alabama. I've lived in southwest Virginia for almost four years now, so gonna get bright enough to wear hat or scalp one day. Not this week, but maybe one day. Very excited to be in this position. Lebanon is where I got married and then started my whole family life here, and so to be in a library that is right in the center of town, right where we can be involved with the town, I've gotten to meet a lot of the patrons here locally, you know, in Russell County, and the patrons directly here in Lebanon in the past six weeks, and it's my favorite part of the job. It's why I got into being a librarian, is because you can help people for a moment and send them on their way with a good happy feeling about something. So that's why I'm here, that's why I chose the position, that's why I came to Russell County to be a director and work with you all the best that I can. If you have not been in the library lately, I do invite you all to come in. We have been moving some things around, kinda refreshing things, so I think you'll enjoy a nice, happy space to come into, and we have got an amazing meeting room, so anybody in their own separate needs outside of the council and chit-chat with people in Lebanon, please let us know that we do have a meeting space that's there for the community. And so we wanna make sure that we can host everybody with either our books, our digital resources, or just our physical space. If anybody has any questions, please reach out to me. If there's any way I can help Lebanon, help the council, let me know. We're already in the works for hunting on May, so hopefully get a good footprint up there on the hill.
There we go.
But thank you all so much for the opportunity to talk to me.
Well, we wanna welcome you to your new position, and we certainly look forward to working with you as the years go.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, dear.
See you, Karen.
Hello, Mayor, I'm here to do a gentle. I just came back by again to see if there was any questions about Air Med Care Network, see what we could do as far as offering that to the people. Last meeting we left, and there were some questions about insurance coverage on lights. Mr. Yormer, Mr. Reddick, who said this?
Twenty percent co-insure.
Any other questions about Air Med Care Network that we covered, or?
Say what you said again, Drew.
Twenty percent co-insure, basically their insurance, like twenty percent of the we would get if you made it fly.
Yeah, okay.
Drew and Diane, how much trouble would it be to do payroll deductions for employees that are willing to participate in the plan?
You have to have three, right, know what you said. So long three employees, three employees, uh, to the plan, I think you have a lot of different options for payroll deduction, we can do it by the year, by three years.
Administratively, though, it's not, won't be too complicated.
It'd be a southern software, called a southern software, and go through them.
Is that something Beverly would work with? You need to do this, you gotta have at least three interested, is that how we do it?
Have to have at least three folks sign up for the membership in order to put it in as an account. I'm never aware of that being an issue.
So how do the employees know that this might be available, do you know?
No.
Have y'all discussed that at supervisors' meetings yet?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to send out a memo to the employees, see if it's something that you're interested in. Sign them up, let them do employee deductions. Also take the plan, if we have a lot of participation. During budget review time, see if this is something that we want to include in future budgets that the town picks up. That would be my suggestion.
So motion.
So moved.
Get further discussion.
So the only question I've got with that is, so if we did that, we look and pick it up next year? Would we just offer the employees a one-year membership?
You can do that, you can offer just a one-year membership if you're going to payroll deduct this year and then look forward to maybe offer that as a paid benefit to the town, or if we have employees that want to just pick up three, five, or ten-year option. And then going forward, the town picked up the deal for the following year, that year would just tag on to whatever those employees picked up in this initial year. So, Mr. Short, if you picked up ten-year this year, and then the town paid for it the following year, then you would still have nine years after that. It would just continue to tag on to the end, it doesn't run concurrent in the process. So if we do have, if some of the town employees that want to get it for a longer time, Frank, is our price?
Yes, it does.
Actually, it's something. I'm working, it's taken.
What was the rate annually, is it seventy-five dollars?
Seventy-five.
Okay.
So will you need me with the employees, I guess, to explain this?
Yeah, the easiest way, because a lot of people don't know that this is something that even exists.
Right.
Is, I don't expect Mr. Short or Diane to try to sell this. I'll need employees, supervisors, whatever we need to do, to sit down and get them aware of what the benefit is and how it can work for them.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those saying aye, just before we make that move, Daniel with Drew.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Their council is available for that too, right?
Yes, council is available.
Okay, under new business, C Core Leader of Support.
Mayor, under information, under C Core, it's after the gymnastics photos. It's titled C Core Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, July first. Me and the mayor, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Fields attended the ribbon cutting or open house for C Core. And, of course, the mayor was asked to open up. And the Russell County Sheriff's Office was there in support. The Department of Corrections was there. The State Patrol Office and the Virginia Opioid Authority were all there in support. Looking at page two, I think this is important. Essentially, this program is a continuation of what was already there. They did want to emphasize these are nonviolent, non-sexual offenders that will be housed there. I know that was a concern from this council. With that being said, I would like to do, in the form of a motion, a letter of support for their future applications. They are still continually applying for funds with different entities. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
The, I think they did, I think it's over a two million dollar investment, and they are employing twenty full-time employees at the facility.
Okay, we have a motion, just a real second.
I'll second, Mayor.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Mr. Short, if his pace is, are you gonna meet Drew and you all?
I was hoping the mayor and Drew would get together on that.
We will. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Hey Drew, we'll get together. With that settled, then you're up, Mr. Short.
Good evening, thank you all. First I'm on my insurance, um, management report, actually the insurance information that would just cover everything, so we'll skip that one. It's just the, I put it in management report for two weeks, but it's in there. The biggest thing I have is probably gonna be our equipment replacement bids. I've got an extra, actually barely working on it. Got an extra bid from Morgan McClure Chevrolet on the twenty-four, uh, two thousand twenty-four fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred Silverados. One of those would be the replacement Chris Dice truck, and the other would be the replacement of the four-by-four, we sold that surplus a couple of years ago. It's in the cabinet, so it's surplus a couple of years ago. Morgan McClure actually came in with a lower bid on each of those. That fifteen hundred was thirty-eight nine ninety-five, and the twenty-five hundred was forty-nine three ninety-five. Both of these were talked about, we covered when we talked about the place equipment budget.
Two in the budget.
At two hundred and sixty thousand in that budget. It looks, the biggest thing with the budget though is, um, we've got about, still it's gonna be about fifty thousand dollars for the brush truck. Thirty-eight nine ninety-five for the fifteen hundred, forty-nine three ninety-five for the twenty-five hundred. And if we go with the new dump truck that's proposed, also in here, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That puts us six thousand three hundred and ninety dollars over budget for equipment replacement. Granted, we have some capital savings in there, maybe get some more out of trade-in or the surplus, the surplus that dump truck. If you would like me to negotiate, if I can get down to two hundred and sixty dollars off of that. So if we get a couple thousand dollars off each one of them, we'll be behind.
Does Worldwide by chance offer a trade on the truck to get an active bid?
Forty-five hundred, I think, or how, how was that? One of them was the.
It's seventy-five.
And then forty-five hundred is what Worldwide offered. Worldwide is also, while we're talking about the trucks, the ones that have the dump truck for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, has a source of contract, same as the state did.
So can't last since, you said we had that, do we got?
We put two hundred and sixty thousand back for these four items to replace.
And we're six.
Six thousand three hundred and ninety dollars.
Did you get that from where? In the budget?
Capital savings. But like I said, I don't mind to go back and see if I can, you know, if you want to approve it at this price, I need to still negotiate if I get some off of it, or however you guys want to go with that. But it does, everything does fit, new equipment, like I said, six thousand three hundred and ninety.
Did I miss something on the dump truck, is the old, is the used dump truck now out of the picture?
So the one that they came in from Bigfoot Enterprises, it had some pretty rough shape compared to that. For forty thousand dollars, more than brand new, it was.
I stopped and inspected that truck, and there's Scott. They said it was gonna be at the town shop for three or four days, so I just went by, looked at, looked the truck over good. It was in need, I mean, just to be, not really operational, but be not an eyesore. It needed some updating done. Headliner was falling down in the steering wheel. The paint on it was in rough shape. Mechanically, I don't know, I didn't drive the truck, I didn't inspect the truck, I didn't remove it, I didn't check brakes. But the price difference in that used truck with, at two hundred and forty-four thousand miles, I think I'm correct?
I think so, we're close to that, yeah.
Compared to a new truck with zero miles and a warranty, I'm sure that has a hundred, five or a hundred thousand mile warranties over there.
It's got all the spec sheets in that information package.
I couldn't see the difference, and I never made a recommendation, but just me looking at the condition of that truck, and then looking at a new truck with a warranty and serviceability and the curb appeal. Kind of a no-brainer.
Well, you want to go on, but I think everyone that stopped by and looked at had more, either the same or some different issues with the used one. I think it was gonna ask to realign that when Scott brought it back and drove it, except we need some realigning, so it also.
Was the air conditioning didn't work? Definitely more things.
Well, if we move forward with this, Drew, I like the idea of approving and letting you try and negotiate it down.
So we could, we could approve up to an amount for it.
This, yeah, the two, whatever we both, two sixty, don't you say?
Yes, right now, I said, needs right now bring us in with those four fixes and four replacements. Equipment replacement, we talked to six thousand three hundred and ninety over.
How much of this is related to the state?
All of it, but you can't use state street to fund it, but you can be reimbursed by state street.
Out of usage, out of usage.
You can bill.
Bill based on the usage, good.
It's my understanding that the bids for Morgan McClure cost, so.
You'll get, probably won't get much, maybe the.
I mean, you can see the difference.
Yeah.
That truck, that dump truck does have part of the space, it does have steel painted wheels on it. Those are okay, they're standard. I would prefer Alco, which are polished aluminum, they're not that much more expensive. You can talk to Worldwide and see if they can work something out with that. Let them know we would like to keep those steel wheels if something does kind of do a swap with us, but if we can use those same twenty-two and a halfs on another truck out there. Just mention that, see what they can do negotiation-wise. Those polished aluminum wheels are not hard to keep up. And you don't have to worry about them rusting and turning orange and all of that, it's just like we're dealing with now on some trucks.
I'd like to vote on these individually and move forward, Mayor.
Let's do it. Sir, motion.
I'll put that. The dump truck in the form of a motion with the improvements by the street committee chair.
I'll second.
Okay. We're gonna understand the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same as that. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve two thousand twenty-four Chevrolet fifteen hundred and Morgan McClure Chevrolet.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same as that.
Also, I'd like to make a motion to purchase two thousand twenty-four Chevrolet twenty-five hundred. I'll second.
Motion in a second on the twenty-four, twenty-five hundred. So, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same as that.
Mayor, I agree with you, any, won't hurt to try to negotiate, I know we approved these prices. Can't hurt to ask.
Can't hurt to ask, probably. Also, is there anybody in agreement, sorry for losing that dump truck? So you ready?
Yes, yes.
Do you have to cite it for the next option? If you surplus that?
Could you probably get more out of it?
On August thirty-first, there's a, I don't know, as a municipality property, all the other stuff stayed on, but August thirty-first, there's an auction in Abidin.
I think you have to advertise it. Advertise it, yeah. We have a surplus.
They would be there, or? Couldn't we take it there?
I mean, I think you just have to advertise it's gonna be sold in a lot of years.
That's, I know that's, uh, cause I plan on going, it's August thirty-first. At Abidin Auto Auction.
That's, they have a surplus.
He's having a surplus. That seems, I don't know, you have to ask Kevin what that's, um, give him a date. Now, you can put a. You can waive dates, is that okay?
You can put a reserve on it, Mayor.
It doesn't have to say there, you can put a.
That's what I'm asking.
You can put a reserve on it.
You can put a limit on what we want. That's for our auction, so. I mean, I don't know if it's, what's your requirement, stop talking about, we have the needs of five of them. And if that's the case, we already put in there, you all agree to hold here, reserve the.
Let me ask you this, we're talking about reserve, did Worldwide say anything about, uh, when they were talking about doing the trash trucking and roll-off, doing that exchange program, did they say anything about taking this thing and such?
The trash trucks didn't qualify for a, all the roll-off trucks qualify.
Okay, so they looked at the equipment, yeah.
Exactly. I motion we go back. You're needing to know what our reserve would be, so what you're asking.
If you all agree to put, to take it to a surplus auction, if we have time to advertise for it.
That's what I'm saying. You got to, you have to do that for two weeks, or one week?
That's what Kevin's gonna find out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're getting more out of that truck in Abidin with all those eyeballs over there and equipment options we're right here to borrow. Sure. Be a bunch of people there.
It's brutal, well, let me, let's hear some reserve figures. If we're, if we can meet the deadline.
We'll do a forty-five hundred dollar reserve, that's what we can get on trade. Could bring more than that. That's what reserve made by then. Most likely it's gonna bring somewhere around twelve, fourteen thousand.
You think so?
Yeah, I know so. Go try to buy one. In the worst case, in the worst case scenario. In worst case scenario. Worst case scenario, though, let it go for five. The thirty-five. Our reserves aren't gonna keep this thing from going to fourteen grand if that's the market. The reserve is just, the worst case scenario. Whatever we're comfortable, I'd rather, five grand, forty-five five. Now I think you can vote.
What is it?
I don't know if we get that much.
What's the tag on the truck?
Hour four.
What year is it?
Two thousand eleven.
To make a motion to declare a surplus, Mayor, the two thousand eleven dump truck, and send it to auction if allowed, at a reserve price of five thousand dollars.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Do you have each two?
I gave it two.
Okay, you're a good man.
As long as we are prepared with advertising.
Yeah.
No, we're holding on to it.
We're not done. You see another coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Hopefully it brings fifteen grand, Mayor.
If all, once reserve comes off, it'll stop, we must stay in the water after that.
Well, if we make up some of that sixty-three, we're gonna get sixty-three hundred.
Unless you got somebody or two of them mad at each other, once it's done, we'll take the chances.
Make it to a bid more.
Get a bid more, and.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right, Drew.
I'll let you know, um, before we find out about the advertising. The next item is, if you got funding for the sidewalk project on Technology Park. So like I said, we've got funded, we've got approved for everything. What we need to decide to do and what to move forward, we have to commit to pay that payment to schedule payment of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, right, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The next two years, we will have time to budget, this year it's gonna have to be, we're gonna do it. It's gonna have to be our capital savings to get that first payment for companies, it was thrown out after budget.
So I think we do that, you advise us to do.
You can, yeah, not during budget time.
No, that's essential, you got to do.
But now we're at the point where we've got to commit to doing it, if we want to keep, do the project.
Well, what Harvey gets that commitment from V-Dot?
Well, it's a, it's a project that we've talked about for four years. And also, if we, if this project comes back, I talked to the guy, I chased the cannon with V-Dot this week, he's been out there looking at a couple of things. Since we own the property, that's cut across that right away utilities, that nine hundred ninety-five thousand may be drastically.
Maybe what?
It may be drastically cheaper than that, since we own the property, so we don't have to buy any right away.
Oh, that's right.
Anything, none of those ones. Even the engineering may be a little cheaper depending on if they can do some pipe work instead of bridge work. So, but anything that comes back from less than the estimated three point two million, we ought to go to twenty percent of that instead of this, so
Oh, okay.
The price will drop, and we'll be reimbursed for that later. But it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven ninety-six for fiscal year twenty-five, and that's the payment line that's coming up as well. and that's the payment that's going to come up as well.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, Drew, we can, this qualifies for, is this qualified?
It's new.
It's new. All right, this is a project, as you all know, this has been on the table for over four plus years longer, and we finally have received commitment from V-Dot, a substantial amount of money to do this. So we need, if I'm understanding, Drew, we need to decide tonight, uh, on the first payment out of the capital.
Same.
Say.
You give me, every year, you all give me authority to sign off on all V-Dot papers when you give the amendment for that, but still need your authority to get signed, to sign. So you all want to sign anything or anything, we're just starting moving forward.
So does that mean, are you going to be signing all of this that's in this agenda?
Correct, yes.
So you need, all right, we'll have a motion regarding this project.
I'll put that in the form of a motion, Mayor.
I'll second it, Mayor. This is the Technology Park Sideways Sidewalk Project, correct?
Correct.
Fiscal year would be one thirty-one seven ninety-six on the payment schedule for this fiscal year.
Correct.
I'm doing my second, Mayor.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those.
When they start, Drew.
They're, they're starting planning right now, that's why we've had to make permanent. But you can see on, on the, the construction is, I think it's twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven, we'll do easements and plans and rideaways this year, start some, like I said, hopefully the rideaway utilities is, we can cut off.
Only less than being done.
Correct. Back to now, what's the update on the bucket truck?
The, uh.
Brush truck, sorry.
The brush truck, so April twenty-first is supposedly when Midland is going to receive the parts put on. They received it, Bill and his lady were contacting each other, had everything ready to go. She took off on vacation. While she was off on vacation, they received from Pac Mac a twelve-foot boom instead of what we needed was the ten-foot boom. And with her not being there, employees didn't know any difference, so they even had to put it on and have it ready to go. And she got back realized it was wrong boom, so they've had to order the ten-foot boom from Pac Mac. And supposedly expedited, I tried to get a demo from them, something to borrow, or just send out a fax until the part came in, but they've already disassembled everything. Uh, so right now, we're using Thursdays and Fridays with the dump truck and the excavator to take out as much brush as we can get.
Now, there's no extra charge on them putting them on, having to take it off and do it again.
No, 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 we're not going to be charged for that.
So when do you think we'll get it back?
If it's received August twenty-first, I think it's three days labor, so.
Okay.
So, eleven, twenty-fourth of September, pause. Yes.
All right.
Fire department renovation updates, they finished the flooring Friday evening. I talked to John Michael, I think they're going to put those trucks in there, and we're moving back out today and put them in tomorrow. Hank and his crew pulled the antique trucks out today, started washing out the insides of that, uh, so we got those trucks sent over there. I think John's crew's going to detail those trucks and let the inside dry up, be able to paint that asphalt, and also cut the asphalt for the landscaping. One thing about the, uh, Fire Department, Nathan Brown has emailed, uh, John Michael mine, and he's recommended after they got the rock up and how it looks, now he's, now he's going back, he's going around again, painting the tin, that galatin to match the grade that's on the split base, uh, the grash cover on that.
Do you get bids on that yet?
I've not been, I've got an estimate from Keith, uh, because he has known about it, he's been out there working.
Yeah.
I haven't been able to advertise or anything. Uh, Keith actually gave me a steel bid, so I don't, I hit my opening right now, pretending like we're going to have, I want to get the contract ways out there, or advertise, or how we do it.
You showing both sides, Drew?
The windy side and the.
Play the acid.
All of it.
Yeah. Keith's the only one that bid on the project, Mayor, I'd like to open it up and see if it's reasonable to move forward with the.
See what you got.
Don't feel heavy.
Paint east-west side of building, uh, and inside the showroom, roof of showroom, pressure wash, stainless metal side, two times, prime mail, two coats of paint, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Paint backside of building, all doors included, pressure wash, sand and seal, two times, prime, two coats, paint, spray, paint bottom, block out of bottom, ninety-five hundred, for a total of twenty-eight thousand dollars.
We came in under budget, and we're talking about them to begin with. Remember?
We budgeted two hundred fifty thousand, had to come in at about two hundred and fifteen, and then we added.
Two fifteen, two nineteen.
Then we added five for the gas. John said he took that over the budget if we were, or if we were over budget.
We added twenty-seven hundred maybe to the pilot that went on top for fading, since the doors aren't tenored across the floor. Still, I think, um, from an aesthetic standpoint, is it?
It's still over budget.
Yeah, it is under budget than what we talked about wanting, where we wanted to be. Now, it's always good to be in a budget currently, but from an aesthetic standpoint, I think it's going to make a world of difference in how that whole project looks. I also understand there's a point that you just have to stop, you know, renovating also, but this right here is a, I think, once it's up, once everything's finished up, it's going to make a huge difference in the aesthetics and curb appeal for the Fire Department in the town alone.
Mayor, I'd like to move forward, Keith said the construction proposal, finish out the building at twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I'll second, Mayor.
Got a motion to a second, any further discussion?
I would just like to say that.
You are right, you did. You did say that, you did.
Hold, hold in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those.
Put the permanent record in the minutes.
Yeah.
I told you something, make a hell of it.
Yeah, there you go. That's what he just texted me. Drew, I think it's, I think we need, and Mayor, the signage at the street, I think that'll be minimal cost, instead of redesigning that, Nathan had sent a plan for, he worked with John.
Wooden sign.
On the current wooden sign, uh, I wish I had a picture of that. Just changing the color scheme on it slightly to include some red, uh, I'll try to get that printed off by committee reports, and if we can do that maybe. Uh, but I'd like to keep that approved tonight, too.
That's under your, I just, you, we need to use, uh, Cooley signs did all those, did not? His grandson take it over, since you're upset, as well as nephew.
They took it over recently.
I just, I, I.
Well, I'll let everybody look at it, I'll get it printed off. Do you think else?
Hand signings are in production, from Bristol Signs, like their production.
Next month?
Yeah, should be.
Is the big sign living in dawn or late in the night?
Yeah, the two of them, one goes across the top and one on the side. And then Billy and I have started looking at some roads for paving requests, we got a, uh, GIS map for our roads now. Isaac Corrector did that for us with the lane group, so now we're going to be able to keep track of those. Uh, it's just like our water line GIS, except it's for the roads, uh, and I'm working right now with him to label those, so they'll be code coded by year when they're striped, when they're paved. Uh, you can click on it and then tell you the rideaway, state road, town road, year it was striped, year it's paved, how much tonnage it was, so that'll be a big help on the next time when we want to look at roads to pave. Uh, but with that, I also want to take any requests that the council may have in roads that you've seen, uh, that may, that may be a worse strike. Or if you have any over the next little bit.
Russell Street, what's the?
So Russell and Mill, as soon as everything's done with the courthouse, and they have all their equipment out there, we'll pay that, but that'll be reimbursed by the county.
Coming in Mill Avenue, will you do that?
Yeah, all of that, probably where the new sidewalk is and all of that, but those who know the, doing it right now, we still have that construction work on the new road. But yeah, if anyone thinks of any or comes up with any, uh, that you've been hearing or anytime they have, don't care to email me or text me, let me know, we'll take a look at it.
When you, when they start on Russell, make sure they, if you would, ask them to start right off North Church Street, all the way through. You know where on the top of that?
I do.
Still, just a piece section there.
You don't just stump one down the hill, you want Church Street.
Church. You know, when you turn on to Russell going up the hill, off North Church Street, that's where I'm talking about.
So just passing toward the courthouse, song pass where, uh, coffee shop used to be.
You have to stop something.
One of the decker properties. Yeah, gotcha, yeah. That's what you're talking about.
You got many properties down there.
I don't know what you're.
Doctor.
Turn right on Church Street, and you turn right on Russell.
Start there and get.
Start there, no building, peace movie.
Yeah.
Do the whole thing.
Yeah, we're tying there.
And while we, uh, by the sheriff's department.
Well, that's not Russell.
Technology driving, sending the counties reimbursed.
And then, um, one other thing I've got to ask for, um, that I received after the board, Ryan Fox contacted us, um, they, or the nets messed up back on the wall field on the far end, catches the field goals, and Russell County does not have a bucket truck high enough to put that net up, so they've asked for help, uh, or asked if it would be okay if everybody asked to come in and take our bucket truck.
Think we do it before for you. That's what we've got, we're up to place time.
It is.
Um, I'd like to also make the motion, Mayor, uh, for discussion, to, uh, Keith's currently raising money for the boosters to get new nets or get a new net, right now, they're just, for the project Drew's talking about, uh, they're just kicking the balls over the hill. We have, we have five hundred dollar budget for extracurricular athletics, living in high school, I'd like to release those funds, uh, pencil pots, uh, for this project if we're needed.
Is that in form of a motion?
Yeah, in form of a motion, Mayor.
I'll second, Mayor.
Motion to a second, further discussion? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those.
They did buy this, he did tell me they bought this feeder system.
Yeah, I heard it.
And he was trying to raise funds for the, for the netting.
Yep.
And that's all I have, unless anybody have questions. Uh, Drew, there's a lady from Mechanic County, uh, Reese Hill Roberts, who reached out to me about the splash pad, and she was, uh, requesting some information, they're looking to do more of those in Popper Gap, at the park. Um, I told her, I said, it's, I said, that thing consumes water, a lot of water, and I gave her an idea of how much water, I said, but if I was looking at doing a new construction right now, I'd look at doing a recirculating, uh, some type of a recirculation design, I said, for us to retrofit it, it was going to be way too expensive, I said, for a new construction, I said, I would definitely keep that in mind, so she asked if you could get her or somebody to get in touch with her on some information on what we looked at as far as retrofit and some information on the splash pad in general. Now, I can get your contact information.
I think I've got it.
Okay.
That it?
Can you use for Brew?
Yes, um, part-time owners, we're keeping them on to the end of five.
We are, I have a person, I have, yeah, that was, I've got three that are, want to stay on, uh, but it'll have, they'll have a set schedule, it won't just be like when you show them, you can show it, but yeah, got at least three that want to stay on, finish by one, probably, maybe drop to.
Anything else? You need to go into closed session tonight?
I do, Mr.
You have, you have.
I don't have anything.
All right. Hello there, Jesse, are you the chief of place tonight, report?
Yes, sir.
You have a report?
I do.
Come right ahead.
Good seat, Mark.
So, yes.
Very good seat. Uh, looks like for the month of July, we had eight traffic centers written, uh, twelve written warnings, a total of forty-two criminal complaints, uh, thirty-eight criminal arrests and closed cases, and four active cases left. Uh, had nineteen misdemeanor arrests, ten felony arrests, we had three reportable accidents and three non-reportable accidents, we had two DUI and/or DUID arrests, uh, twelve motorist assists, five hundred and forty cost per service, uh, total mileage of twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-two miles, and that was with nine hundred point three gallons of fuel used. Uh, in our community, releasing events, we had our Independence Day celebration, the Little League tournament parade, the Bet Fest poker run, the five K run, and several funeral escorts. Any questions that I can answer? I don't know if I make a very good desk or not, but I'm trying.
That was so short and sweet when we get Jesse to.
Some people say it's big shoes to build, your shirt needs to be built.
Yeah.
Command, I'd like to commend the PBN Fire Department for their actions at Fox Meadows, quick response by both agencies, and also the surrounding agencies. Um, it was really impressive to see a community coming together and the whole area coming together.
Yeah, those.
And just commend our employees and staff for that. And then also, we had, after that, we had two more fires, two more house fires, and just business as usual, quick response, quick foot out, and just, we got one of the best, we've got the best Fire Department around, so we really commend and we're really blessed to have a wonderful apartment.
And boys.
It means a lot, uh, not just wearing Michigan a form, but, but running public Fire Department also, it means a lot coming from you guys to, to hear that.
Jason, I was standing over my property, Jason, across the four lane, and just seeing that other furnace going up, and not knowing what the result was going to be with the close proximity of those apartments, uh, so I, you know, I second Brad on that, and I would even like take a step further, and it was humbling to see all those departments come to the aid of Lebanon, Virginia, uh, and they just kept coming, because I guess they didn't know at that point what kind of situation you would want to have with those apartments, you know, being in such close proximity to each other. Um, and maybe Drew or Brad, you know, maybe the mayor, we can somehow express our thanks to those agencies that did respond to Lebanon, Virginia. Maybe Drew can write a letter, or Major Tom Call or something, or I think that would be very.
Brandon, you get, we're just being.
What's that?
This is kind of.
I think so.
They received one last one.
Yeah, let's do that.
The what?
The letter to the.
Yeah, I think they would appreciate that.
Can you get me the contact info? Can you get?
Are those support, I mean, they said, let me do that for today, firewalls?
I don't think Fox Meadows has firewalls, uh, and it was, uh, if the fire hadn't been stopped in the breezeway where it was stopped, it, it would have ran through the attic and taken out that whole section of the park, yeah.
I think it's in these sections after, was it eight?
I think there's, there's eight or ten from the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh, once it gets in the attic though, it'll just run the full length of those apartment buildings and.
I'll just. Yeah. Try to wind down, but.
It was hot, yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to go into closed session, legal personnel. So moved?
I'll second.
Hey, Mayor, real quick, I didn't, I didn't think of this till just now, but just wanted to kind of give you all a heads up, on September fourteenth, we are doing a Trump ride that is gonna leave out here from the Government Center at ten o'clock. We're gonna come through town, and then, we just haven't figured out, we'll probably just go out and then get on the four lane out there by Pioneer Drive, so, I know somebody else is handling all the, the police and security and all that, but just to kind of give you a heads up that we're gonna be doing that, that, that fourteenth of September, and if it's like the last one, it will be huge, I think it's gonna be bigger yet. We're gonna go from the Government Center, we're gonna go out this way, and then get on the four lane. Um, then we're gonna go through the county, um, we're gonna end up over at Castlewood at the fairgrounds, and we're gonna have music and food and speakers, um, they're really working with the Trump Organization that we may have a member of the family here, I just don't know for sure, would that not be awesome? Ten o'clock, we're gonna pull out down here.
Pull out, out here at ten?
Yes.
That's a falls well with Kevin. I was talking, I got nobody's office tomorrow, make sure I'm well.
Yeah, it's gotta make sure that there's nothing else going on down there, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, section two point two, thirty-seven eleven A, personnel and legal, Mayor, this motion.
Is there a second? Who did, who's rising? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those, same as aye. We're standing in second session.